I will wait until, okay. It is the Monday, March first, two thousand and twenty-one School Board Workshop. It's six P M. And I'll call our meeting to order. Just a roll call that we have to do out loud. Mr. Bryant, are you here?
Here.
Nikki Buck?
Here.
Arlen Derrick?
Here.
Anna Ostendorf?
Here.
Holly Tower?
Here.
Jennifer Tiff?
Here.
And Cher is here, and our Superintendent Anderson is here. So all seven board members are present. So thank you. We'll go ahead and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance
allegiance
to the flag
of the United States of America.
And to the Republic
of which it stands
one nation under God
indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And I'll go ahead and read our mission statement this evening. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens. All right. So tonight, our meeting agenda is to talk about school board procedures and to talk about how it can be more efficient and effective in our time together during our meetings. And then if we have any other board-related topics, I do have one. There's a proposal on the table by a community member on a proposal called Adopt a Winger, and I'll explain all about that. But it's a way for parents and teachers to be more connected. So I will tell you a little bit more about that. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add under the other board-related topics?
Did you have something in there about agendas and? Is that, did you just say that?
We're going to be talking about agendas during meeting efficiency and procedures. That's definitely part of those three things.
Yep, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Yes, because we definitely need to figure out how to be more efficient on the agenda time. So, good. Anything else? Maybe some things will come up as we go. But that is our sole purpose this evening is to just talk about how things are going as our board is forming. And we're in the forming stages still of this new seven-member board. And so we wanted to spend some time talking about how our procedures are going, what we like about what's happening, what we'd like to see changed or enhanced, and just get your feedback on how things are going overall with our school board. And then efficiencies. I talked to Nikki just earlier about tonight is fairly informal. So it's just a conversation. That's the main purpose of our workshops is to have a more informal, casual conversation. There is no actionable items on the table this evening. It's just a time for us to come together and have more discussions about these related topics. So with that, I will go ahead and hand over the school board procedures to Superintendent Anderson. He'll give us a little bit of a background on where this came from and and how this got to be on our agenda this evening.
Great. Thank you, Pam. We've had bits and pieces of the information in this handbook in other places for a number of years. And this year, we decided to put it as one handbook. So I took a bunch of information, not only from those other sources internally, but also from the board evaluation that we conducted a year ago, from other MSBA sources. It does not include everything that should be included. In a lot of the areas, I just put something down on paper, knowing that the school, this is the school board's handbook, the school board's rules of operations. So really, the school board should be, you know, making those decisions. So that's kind of the source of the handbook. The Legislative and Policy Committee did review it at its last meeting. Typically, I would take that feedback and then make adjustments in the handbook before presenting it to the full board. Because I was out though last week, that hasn't happened yet. I took some notes, and so, you know, I'm sure that we can review, you know, not only my notes in conjunction with the handbook, but then also other comments as well. So I figured that's a good starting point. One thing that Anna suggested during the committee meeting was to actually have different people kind of just briefly present information from each article. And I thought that was really nice, so you don't get too sick and tired of listening to me all the time. So, you know, if there is someone who wants to just lead the discussion in a particular article, or Pam could throughout the whole handbook, you know, something like that, I think would be great. So again, this is a starting point for discussion.
Does any member of the Policy Legislative and Policy Committee, do they want to talk a little bit about your review and some discussion points that you had in your meeting?
Sure, I can. So we just, you know, kind of read through the document, and we pointed out a few areas that we thought needed to be fleshed out a little bit to have a little more information, especially in light of some things that have kind of come up during the board meetings where there's been, you know, disagreement or just discussion about what should be in the minutes and, you know, how the agenda should be structured. That the more of that we can lay out in here, the better that that would be for, you know, everybody moving forward and to keep our regular meetings, you know, moving efficiently, not spending too much time rehashing things. So I don't know if we want to just go through like section by section. The first section, Article One, is just, you know, kind of names and addresses of relevant people. So really, it starts with Article Two and the norms of operation.
Can I actually ask a question? I know the answer to this, but I think it's important for everyone to know where the names of the people that are listed in under Article One, how those came to be in this document.
Yeah, I can provide that response. Several years ago, there was a complaint filed against the school district with the Office of Civil Rights. As we were reviewing the complaint and discussing the issue with OCR, we agreed that we would include this information, you know, about non-discrimination representatives in all of our handbooks. So you'll see the same document in the student handbook, employee administrative procedures, the school board procedures, in any handbook, you'll see this document. There were some changes this past year as far as who serves the, as the ADA in Section 504 Coordinator, Title IX Coordinator, and Human Rights Officer because of some recent retirements. And so a lot of the names are new on this particular page.
And Carson, are there specific things that the people that are listed here, do they have to go through any training or anything in particular to be listed as those officers and coordinators?
Yeah, and we still have some training to do, especially with regard to the human rights component. Sheri Johnson is very knowledgeable about ADA and Section 504 coordination. Also, Amy has kind of learned a lot this year, just because of, there have been a lot of accommodations because of COVID. So I would say both are well-trained. Whenever there's a question that we're not sure about, then, you know, one of them will contact legal counsel for guidance. So I feel very confident there. We do not get many Title IX complaints in the school district. So when we do receive them, we typically work with our legal counsel to review the complaint and to come up with some determinations. Human rights in most years is pretty busy. That would include any complaints about bullying, harassment, and hazing, and those kinds of infractions. This year, the number of incidents have gone way down, largely because a lot of our kids are learning via distance learning. But that's one area that we do need to follow up on and make sure that both Jess and Amy are well-trained in that area. We have had some complaints, and so once again, they'll either confer with me or with district legal counsel on how to proceed.
And as I remember, the human rights officers have traditionally been the Director of Teaching and Learning, like historically, I know Joe has done that, and Beth Borogan has done that. So it's traditionally been something that that, that's a part of that, the Director of Teaching and Learning, that person's job description. Is that correct?
Yeah, and once again, because of, I think, a different OCR complaint several years ago, we agreed to change some of our policies in terms of who does what. And we have the human rights officers, and then if there's a complaining party that is not satisfied with that determination, then it would go to me as the, I believe I'm called the Equity Officer. So that's why we really try to choose some district-wide people to serve in that role, because then they have flexibility to go to different buildings and to address both student and staff issues. But then I'd be the next layer to review a complaint.
Well, and as I recall too, and then I'll just ask this last question and then turn it over to Jennifer and Holly. I see your names in the queue. When we did have a complaint about harassment, and I believe it was two years ago when this came up, and the person that was listed as a human rights officer was a male, and the person who had an issue was female, and we discussed how because of the issues surrounding that harassment complaint, we perhaps needed to not have a male be the interviewer, that it was really important to make sure that both genders were in here somehow, that we could make sure that if it's a female issue being harassed, we, you know, it might have been easier for her to have spoken with a female. And that wasn't listed, there wasn't a female at that time listed in here. So I just want to make sure that we're thinking about those kinds of issues about gender equity and being helpful and responsive to those concerns that might come up, especially around harassment. All right, Nikki, I'll, or no, sorry, Jennifer, and then Holly, and then Nikki.
Thank you, Pam. I was going to change the subject just a little bit, if that's okay, for ready to move on. On this page that Anna pointed out, Article Two, the norms of operation, I just wanted to mention under collaborative decision-making, I really like that the first thing is to make decisions with equity as the primary priority. But I think it needs to be a priority for the board to have more training on what equity is, and so that we are kind of all on the same place in terms of what that means. And then also, it just, I brought up a few things about equity before with our education plan, having equity actually be written on that sheet that is, you know, our education plan that we present every time. There's nothing on there about equity, but we claim that it's our priority. And so I think we really need to make it clear to the public that it actually is. And I think we all need to work to be on the same page with that.
Yep, I definitely agree with you, Jennifer. And I spoke with Pam and Jim, I think, last Tuesday virtually, and we agreed that we would have equity as a workshop topic in April. And those are two of the issues that we can discuss, board training, and also, you know, including some sort of statement on equity as part of the education plan. And we can also talk about some of the other work that we've been doing over the past, you know, one-plus years. And other plans moving forward.
Yeah, thank you.
And while you, while this comment is on the table, I think it'd be really great if you had some suggestions, Jennifer, or other people on the board. Maybe we could have some sort of a shortened training that evening, or at least a springboard, a start of some sort of training on that evening, since that'll be our overarching topic for April. It'd be really great if we didn't have to come back on another time or another evening for a training, you know. I, personally, I would much rather see a three-hour meeting instead of a two-hour meeting and not have to come back for a third time for another training. I know. So, anyway. Holly?
I'm going to take us back to the other thing that you were talking about, Pam. In terms of the person who hears the complaints, I'm a firm believer that HR should be the one hearing the complaints and doing the interviews. And I know we've had a pattern of having people who are the Directors of Curriculum Instruction or kind of be in that role, but in my experience in Red Wing, it hasn't been a good idea. It's, it's happened because we haven't had staffing. We don't have a lot of staff at the, you know, director level. But having had to experience that in Red Wing, when I talked to the HR person originally, which was Connie Bryant, Jim, I found that her knowledge around complaints and things like that was much greater and much more useful to me than the Director of Curriculum and Instruction at the time, who was Kathy Radmer. So I know that we have gone in that direction. I'm, I'm just saying I want it to be somebody trained in HR, trained in how to interview, how to investigate, somebody with the right legal components, the right credentials. So I'm real hesitant in supporting a situation where it's somebody coming from the outside who's not versed in those types of things. And I feel confident saying those names because of my experiences. So I just really feel strongly that it needs to be somebody in HR, and if we don't have enough people, we look in that direction. We don't grasp from other areas to fill spots, just to fill spots.
Yeah, I'll say that's a fair point, because, well, Connie and now Amy, you know, are trained in human resources management. And this is obviously an important part of that. The one possible exception, though, would be, I think, the ADA in Section 504 coordination. It's nice having Sheri or the Special Education Director serving as somebody in conjunction with the HR person, just because, you know, a student issue is so often, you know, if there's an ADA or Section 504, you know, complaint, it's nice to have an expert who's greatly involved.
You're muted, Holly. Start over.
Well, I agree with you, Carson. Student issues are multi-layered, and in staff issues are different. But there needs to be one consistent person versed in the legalities of what an investigation looks like. And then who do you branch out to from there? Is it Carson? Is it Sheri? You know? Or how do we look at that? Because I'm still not sure that when people come in and they have something that they want to go to somebody confidentially with, that it's not clear. And I don't necessarily think when I was in the district, it was clear. And I was routed to Connie, Ms. Bryant, through other people, and she should have been my first stop. I really feel, based on the experience I had with her, I was like, why didn't? So that was all coming in from when you had just started, Carson. So that was a different experience. But I didn't see it really, you know, getting much better, because we had some people that were in conflict with other people, and it wasn't a clean slate for people to be able to bring their concerns forward.
Yeah, I'll add to that, Holly. I don't think most districts would have a main person and an alternate listed. And that might create some confusion. You know, so for example, we have Amy French and Jess Whitcomb listed as human rights officers. Well, which one is it? And, you know, so I think there could be some, you know, conflicting information, you know, as far as who goes where for those kinds of things.
And the training behind it.
And the what?
And the training behind it as well.
Right, yep. Now, on the flip side, it's kind of nice to have a backup, you know, just in case the HR person takes another position, or perhaps there's a conflict between someone and the human rights officer, so it's nice for that person to choose another one. But there might be some other ways of accomplishing that.
I mean, I've read in other districts where they actually use the attorney for that work.
Yeah, and, you know, we often rely on the attorney, but we, you know, like having somebody here who can at least take the reports and screen them. For example, there are some harassment reports that are pretty routine, you know, that we know how to handle when they come across our desk, but many of them are much more complicated. And, you know, we like to double-check what we're doing, and so we often confer with the attorney on these kinds of things.
Okay. I'm just wondering if they should be part of the mix, instead of the confer on the back end that people don't know that that's happening.
Sure.
Well, I think you bring up a really good point, Holly. There's a huge difference between, you know, if you're an employee being harassed by, say, a coworker or a student, in the case that I was thinking about, a student who is being harassed by another student and brought that forward. And so I think, you know, we have to spell it out. I think it needs to be very clear who your go-to person needs to be, if you're an employee or if you're a student. This is your first stop. I think it needs to be a hundred percent clear. If we have an alternate, that's great, and I think we, maybe we should have a couple alternates, because if there's, you know, we have two women here, and if there's, you know, a male student who comes forward and isn't comfortable speaking to, you know, a female about what's going on, we should have, you know, a male who can step forward and, you know, I, we, yeah, all right, I'll just leave it there. So I think we've got some work to do on Article One.
Okay, great.
Nikki, you're in the queue.
My first question's going to be, well, hi, friend. Sorry, it was a bug that distracted me. How many of these people are of ethnicity? None?
That is a very good question. You know, as a matter, you know, as a matter of typically how it handles, I'm not going to announce who, you know, the ethnic origins of a particular person. But I will say that I think having a more diverse group here would be helpful.
Well, I'm going to go with that there's not really one on there. So the, I'm going to tell you right now, what are the first two, two words after "the district does not unlawfully discriminate on the basis of race or color"? So right, right there is your problem. You're not, and I'm speaking on behalf of an ethnic person. We have a hard time, and it's not just limited to Native Americans. I converse with all different diverse backgrounds. And the Hispanic community feels this too, the African-American community feels this too. But we have a problem with confiding in people that don't look like us. So therefore, the voices that keep getting unheard or keep on the bottom, but yet everybody else is being amplified, because there is no representation of us on there. That's why.
Yeah, I can definitely see your point, Nikki. You know, I'm not sure how we could reconcile that perspective with what Holly talked about, you know, earlier. You know, if we want one person to be responsible for those, you know, for taking in those complaints, and yet we want a diverse pool of people, you know, handling that, you know, I'm just not sure how we could reconcile those. But I think your point's well-taken. You know, it'd be just like what Pam was saying in terms of gender. You know, there are particular situations when someone might feel more comfortable, you know, speaking to someone who looks like themselves. And I think that's your point too, Nikki.
But the thing is, is, and I'm pretty sure I speak on behalf of a lot of ethnic people, is we don't feel heard. You can sit there and tell me that you've heard me and it's taken in, but nothing has changed. Nothing. And on the basis of female and male, that's already been well-discussed. I think that we need to really start focusing on the racial issue here.
Well, I'm going to throw out just an idea, and maybe this is something that we can just ponder for right now, but I wrote the word advocates down here. I know we've got a lot of liaisons that work in our district, and maybe what we need to have is a pool of advocates that when a staff member or a student comes forward, maybe an advocate, a trained advocate is somebody that they go to, and then the two of them make that complaint together. I don't know how that works in other districts, but I think your point is well-taken, Nikki. A lot of people don't want to come forward because they're afraid to speak out, because no one's going to get it, no one's going to understand. And I think, you know, the harassment issue that this young student came forward to us, it took her a long time to come forward too, because she was a female student who was being harassed by a male student. And I keep wanting to go back to that, because she was, she, she did come forward to our school board, and she asked us very specifically to not lose sight of this issue, you know, that we need to do a better job. And so, Nikki, I think, you know, if we can put our heads together at some point and think about ways that this, 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 the non-discrimination and human rights, if there's a better, different way that we can do it, and maybe that's a matter of just making some calls to other school districts and see how they do it. Does anybody have an advocate model? Are there other, I can't believe that we would have to reinvent the wheel here, but I think that, you know, Nikki, I really want to take your idea and run with it, because I think that is really an important piece that's missing here. You're right. This is all, you know, one, women, two, it's not, you know, as diverse as we'd like it to be, and I don't know that we can make it diverse. I don't know that we can have, you know, a pool of diverse human rights officers just at the ready, but we can have advocates. We can train advocates, and so maybe that's the route to go.
You know, the, I think the logical thing, you know, working within our current policies and procedures would be to, like you said, Pam, to identify advocates who could serve as report takers. You know, we list, currently in our complaint process, we list report takers as a building principal or designee, and then we list the same people in the document that we just looked at. And, or the superintendent, if it involves a human rights officer, or the school board chair, if it involves me. So really, it's just a very limited group. But certainly, we could identify and work with people who could serve as advocates, who could take the reports. We could train them on how to take reports and then submit them so that they can, you know, work with the complainant on addressing concerns. So, I mean, that'd be, I think, that changing the process, I think, would be relatively easy. The trick would be to identify those people who could, you know, who would be willing to serve in that capacity. But I think we could do it.
I'm happy to hear that we're moving the dial a little bit here, because I think that's really important. But I also think then that when we have that list of people who are report takers, that I think it absolutely has to be put out there that everybody, that's your first stop then. And people need to know without hesitation or question, I've got this concern, here's who I need to go to for it. So, Holly?
I'm going to go back to the importance of getting people in the positions that are trained and qualified, so that if we do have advocates in different areas throughout the district, we have them going to somebody who is trained and qualified. So in the chat right now, you know, a human rights officer, you have to do more than what we're expecting from our human rights officer, and it's unfair to put somebody with that title on without the training and the knowledge in the background to be able to take what people are saying and understand the laws and everything behind. to be able to take what people are saying and understand the laws and everything behind it. So again, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, I'm not, I'm gonna stick with, we have to be very clear when we do things like this, that we're not just putting somebody in the position to fill the position.
Good point, Holly. And of the two people that are listed, does one of, do either of them have any of the training and the advanced degree to be able to, um, fill that role?
I don't, I don't know.
I'm, yeah, I'm asking, Carson, sorry.
Yeah, you take, you're talking about Holly's, uh, chat?
Yeah, I mean, do we have, I mean, we have Jess Whitcomb and Amy French as the human rights officers listed on, in Article One. Um, are either of them qualified with their degree and their, um, training to be able to actually uh, be able to fit that job description well?
Uh, I'm not sure where the, the qualification section comes from. I don't think that they would, uh, meet what, what Holly listed there.
Okay. Our district attorney?
Uh, yeah, our district attorney would definitely meet that in terms of human rights law or related field. You know, I think related field, you know, maybe could be debatable, I suppose, uh, cause it depends on a person's background. Uh, but, um, you know, definitely the district attorney would meet that.
Okay.
So maybe the district attorney needs to also be listed under the human rights officer, or maybe that's our first stop. But I think your point is well taken, Holly. We need to kind of clean this up greatly. Um, we need to have that one go-to person who can speak to all the things that you were talking about, Holly. So, you know, whether it's getting support for Jess and/or Amy to get them up to speed on what they need to do to be that first stop person, um, along with an advocate and a complainant. Um, but let's make sure that we give that officer or officers the training and the background that they need to be able to carry that job out efficiently and effectively.
Thank you.
Yeah. Nikki?
I was just gonna say, cause I'm a human rights commission for Red Wing. And there is a lot of limitations that we have as the human rights for the city of Red Wing. Um, and what, a lot of things that we have to follow have to go through the city attorney. You know, so what Holly says, you have to be very careful when receiving complaints as a human rights officer, because that's actually the process we are trying to figure out as the commission with the city. And they've put a lot of limitations on us because of the legality. Yeah, I think that was all I had to talk about with that.
You know, kind of related to that, Nikki, is, um, you know, we've kicked around the, the possibility of having a lawyer, um, actually conduct interviews in person with, uh, with complainants and witnesses. Because then at least there's some distance between the investigation and those who might be involved. Um, you know, clearly our, our school attorneys from Minneapolis would not fit that bill, uh, just because of the distance they are from us. Uh, if there was a local attorney who was appropriately trained, uh, and would be willing to, uh, or, and would have flexibility to help us out on a case-by-case basis, uh, that might be a possibility. I'd be much more open to that than asking someone from the cities to drive down on four different days to investigate different complaints. So, um, and I think that's kind of getting, uh, at what Nikki was saying. Nikki, have they chosen someone for that role or not?
Um, for, for what, for what?
For like, um, you know, for the contact person?
Not yet. We're still in the process of trying to figure it out. It's a long process. We, we're over a year into it, trying to figure it out back and forth between city council and human rights. But here's another thing too, and this is probably gonna be brought up when the Native American parent committee comes. But also I wouldn't limit just training for just the human rights officers. I would definite, especially with your, and speaking solely on race and color, the, um, diversity training that all staff is gonna wanna take. Um, I know, uh, Native American, uh, excellent Native American group that came, they're Thrive-ent. They talk about historical trauma. They're from South Dakota. They presented for, um, the county, Good Hugh County, and Prairie Island, um, and the response that they got from Good Hugh County when they, um, when they presented was pretty amazing. Um, when you hear, and coming from a different Native American group, there's, I'm gonna tell you this, there's tension between Red Wing and Prairie Island. Why? Because of the history. Okay? Um, so what I may talk about my experience here, um, a non-native may not wanna hear it coming from me because of the tensions and their pre, um, feelings towards Prairie Island the way already. So they're not gonna wanna listen to me. But coming from a different Native American explaining my experience, it was, uh, the barrier was lifted. So they were able to hear our experience with an open heart. Um, I also have communications and I work, um, I've worked with, um, an African-American man, Thomas Harris, that's done a lot of work in Red Wing with the human rights group. Um, he's from La Crosse. Um, he does diversity training and tries to get, um, all these different groups of people together to work together. And he's at the university, I think, down in La Crosse, not high school. He would be an excellent resource to talk to about all this, all these trainings. Those are just my suggestions. I, I obviously know the life, so I didn't really need the training. But even just sitting in with the historical trauma training, it validated me and my feelings, you know? So it was not only just beneficial to the non-native, it was incredibly beneficial to us Native Americans too, validating everything that has happened to us.
Thank you, Nikki. I really appreciate you sharing that. And I've been through that trauma training too, and it is phenomenal. So that might be something that might be, uh, on our list of things that we could do as a group here too. Arlen, you've been in the queue. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you. Um, what we're discussing here right now is, uh, draft of Red Wing School District School Board Procedures. And this was, was presented to the policy committee here a couple of weeks ago. And we touched on a few things and, but what's being done is we're pulling things from several areas out of our whole school district policy. And what's showing up here right now obviously is a, an issue in our non-discrimination policy and reporting procedures that we are just pulling in, in my opinion, we are just pulling into the school board, uh, procedures. And this goes back to what, uh, Pam was talking about. We, we have to work a lot harder on our non-discrimination policy and, and procedures for reporting and different things. And so it's not just in this school board procedures, but it certainly is pulled out, hey, we got a problem back in our regular policy. Because I think most of this stuff is just being pulled out of our regular policy for the district. So I would encourage us to talk about it more if we need to tonight, but we need to, really as a priorities, investigate our whole non-discrimination policy in all, all of our district policies, not just here. I don't think this says here in what we have tonight that this is a, uh, school board procedures draft. I don't think it's anywhere near ready to bring in front of the board in the near future because of some of these other things. But I'd like to comment on one other thing a little bit farther down here. And then hopefully we, if we got more non-discrimination, I, I'm just doing this because I've got the floor right now. Continuous improvement, when we discussed that at the policy, policy committee meeting, I know I said that we should look at some different wording on continuous improvement. It says, "We are committed to an ethic of continuous improvement." We will. And it's, one was, uh, item three, annually evaluate superintendent while we're doing it twice a year right now. I think that should be changed wording at least annually. It was unsuggested wording. Another one, um, we will participate in at least two other learning sessions sponsored by the MSBA each year. I don't personally believe the board has the authority to say you have to do that. I think we should put wording that we will encourage board members to participate. Look at wording similar to that on that. And, uh, I, I skipped over item five in conjunction. We will complete phase one through four training sessions sponsored by the MS, Minnesota School Board Association. Once again, I think the word should, we, we would, should encourage board members, we will encourage our, all board members to complete it. So that's just wording that I'm looking for in this draft on that section here. But, uh, uh, as far as the non-discrimination, I think Nikki brings up a valid point. We have to have a method for, uh, different, different ethnic groups, people of color, uh, natives, um, whatever they are, to make them comfortable in doing their reporting. But that, once again, I, I think that's an issue that goes back to, um, the whole non-discrimination policy, not just specific to the school board thing. So, hopefully we can get a lot more discussion. I don't know if it comes back to legislative policy committee or if it's something we should do as a board and a workshop dedicated by itself just for that one item. I almost think that would be the way to go. And I, I'm talking way too much here. So I'm gonna stand back. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlen. I actually just wrote that down. Do we need a workshop on this? So thank you for, for, uh, that. Um, I put that on our list of things to talk about tomorrow, Carson and Jim. So we'll, um, we'll have a discussion on that, Arlen, cause you're right, this does bring that back up for us to be reminded that we absolutely need to work on that, those policies and procedures. And so Carson and Jim and I, maybe we can tackle, you know, maybe a, a way to, uh, address that moving forward. Um, I need to keep us moving here. So Anna and then Jim, and then we'll move on through the articles.
Excuse me. Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Arlen said, that, you know, this document is for the school board operation, not necessarily the district operation. So yes, I think we absolutely have work to do on that, um, anti-discrimination or non-discrimination policy and procedures. But I would like to keep us moving forward, um, because I think that's a much larger conversation that, you know, whatever the district, we determine for the district as far as that policy goes would be reflected in this handbook. But in terms of this handbook that we're going through, you know, right now, I think what needs to go in here is what the current procedures are. Um, not that they don't need to be changed, but that, that's why I kind of skimmed over that article because it's maybe not the, the biggest issue in terms of like the school board operations, like us as a board and how we operate, um, just in terms of all the other things that are in there.
Thank you, Anna, Jim.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, good discussion. This is what workshops are about. Happen that open, having that open dialogue, time to talk about things without decision-making. And, uh, a lot of good points brought up here tonight. And I think at the end of the day, this will go back to the committee for further review and, uh, draft, redrafting or drafting. I applaud Nikki for stepping up and saying things like this. Uh, uh, it's not easy for people to say stuff like that. I applaud her. Um, I'm a white male. I know, I don't understand everything. I don't, I never said I do. And I, I, one of my goals in life is to learn something new every day. Uh, I believe in treating people the same, no matter what you look like, what, male, female, whatever, you know, anything. I, I totally believe in that. And, uh, so going forward, I mean, I think, uh, getting a list of, if advocates is the way we end up going, this board and the school district people can submit names to, uh, to the superintendent or the principals and can go from there. Give the committee something to work on. But, uh, I, I know we have a lot to do here on this, but I just wanted to say, I think at the end of the day, when this is all done, this will go back to the committee, uh, to digest and tweak and, well, make it a better document than what it is today.
And I'll just add that it really, um, excites me and makes me super proud that we're having this conversation and that we've got some sort of idea on how we can make every voice feel heard and respected. Especially when it comes to touchy issues that people are bringing forward, not, not just touchy issues, but very deep personal issues, harassment, bullying. Um, those are really difficult conversations to bring forward and, um, allegations. And we wanna make sure that every voice is equally heard. And you're right, Jennifer, when we talk about equity and, um, if that's our number one priority, we need to make sure that we continue every decision with that, with that lens on. And I think being able to have this conversation and try to turn the dial and make sure that even as we have harassment, um, allegations come up, how can we make sure that that's being brought to the table with an equity lens? Um, how are those voices heard and understood and, um, supported? And we, you know, I, so I, I'm very excited and happy that we're having this conversation. So thank you, everybody. It's already six forty-eight and we're only on Article Two. So let's keep moving through, um, anything else that we wanna bring up on norms of operation. I think your point, Arlen, about encouraging instead of, um, saying that you have to participate. I mean, that, that is hard to be able to do if we're all working individuals. So I, I like the idea of encouraging that work instead of, um, requiring that. Anything else that anybody else would like to bring up about Article Two?
And then also Jennifer's comments about, um, uh, equity in terms of decision-making and including that as part of the education plan. I'm not sure if that'll change the document, but at least, uh, we can address that, um, at, at an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, I'm writing that down.
I think it would be good for us to require phase one and two training sessions. Um, but I think to Arlen's point, not all of the sessions are offered all of the time. So, and then, um, when we met in our committee, we were talking about, you know, the way that it's worded is as though as a new board member, I would complete phase one through four and two other learning sessions sponsored in the course of my first year. Um, and I haven't seen three and four, levels three and four offered yet. So it may not even be possible for me to meet that requirement, even if, you know, the timing are worked out for me. So I think that was kind of part of our discussion as well. I think it would be good to require phase one and two because I think they're pretty basic. And, but as a one-time thing, not that you would have to do that every year as a board member, but as an incoming board member. So we talked about tweaking some wording there so that it would be maybe those one and two, a requirement for incoming new board members. But then, you know, to encourage that continuing education throughout the life of your time, your service on the board. If you're on the board for 12 years, you know that you continually get updates because of course things change, laws change and, you know, best practices change and things like that.
Good point. I think is one and two, are those required through the state?
You know, I think they are. I'm not sure how they monitor that.
I think it is, I think it is required, one and two. That's why they're, they're listed as mandatory trainings in that leadership conference in January. But yeah, you're right, three and four. I know there's a four coming up in April, but I, I do like the idea of needing to change that wording. So, yeah, good. Anything else on, uh, Article Two? All right, moving to Article Three, evaluation of superintendent. Um, so the timeline there, uh, was something that Arlen, uh, worked on beginning drafting, uh, at, when he was on as, um, the chair and then he and I worked on it last year. Um, the, the reason for the timeline is because of, there are many ways we could do this timeline and I'm not married to this, this timeline. We could change it. We could keep it the way it is. The re, um, the we, the reason that Arlen and I had worked on changing it to this timeline is June would be, um, we would do a very big full evaluation in November of the superintendent. And we chose that time because, um, his contract or the superintendent contract is up the end of June. And so if the And so if the evaluation in November spurred us on as a group to say, you know, we want to go a different route, then we would have time between November and June to start looking for a new candidate and also give our current candidate time to put his name in the in the ring for a different job as well. If we were to decide in June, if we did the full big evaluation in May or June, then it would be a whole nother year before we'd be able to. I mean, we can terminate a contract at any time, but in the cycle of looking for new jobs in the superintendent world, that's kind of how we felt like it made the most sense. And it also coincided with contraction contracts. And when the superintendent's contract is up and when we would be negotiating his new contract. So that's kind of how that timeline evolved. It used to be that we did the big evaluation in May and June and it just didn't make sense to Arlen and I when when we were conducting it that last, well, when Arlen was conducting it that last year. I want to put words in your mouth, Arlen, but you know, help me out if I I think that's is exactly what we were, why we changed the timeline. Do you want to say anything about that?
Sure. That that's the basic part of it. I mean, we could have this discussion, who should a new board, old board, whatever, deciding when to enter into a new contract they so desire. But the whole concept of the evaluation is if things are going well, we know that prior to the time that would be looking at to extend a contract or letting know or letting a superintendent know that it's maybe time to start looking. And so it's, I I totally am on board with the evaluation timeline. That's what it revolved around is it's made the most sense with timing of superintendent superintendent contracts overall throughout the state of Minnesota. So as far as looking, existing one, looking for a new job and us trying to bring in a new one, it all kind, all fits together better.
And I will say, prior to changing this timeline, there wasn't a mid-year evaluation. We didn't really have that dig in in the middle of the year, kind of put your toe in the water and see how he's doing. We just gave continual feedback, but it's nice to be able to do a little bit more formal. You know, here are your goals that we talked about in November. We bring them back up in May. How are you doing? How are things going? Do we need to tweak anything? And then give more direction further. So right now, that June timeline, the June is kind of a dip your toes in the water, kind of how are things going? And then the November is the big one. Carson, I'll give it to you and then Jim.
Yeah, just a little context. We we have the two evaluations now because we were following best practices suggested by the Minnesota School Board Association. So that's why we added the the extra evaluation. There is one change compared to earlier versions of this process. I think Jim had mentioned this. As far as having a rough draft of the evaluation summary before the evaluation session by the board. So the board could actually look at the kind of the initial draft of the evaluation. It kind of focuses the discussion and then we can, or then you can discuss if that's accurate or something needs to change. I think that'll make things go a little bit more efficiently and effectively. And then also Anna, during the policy committee meeting, had suggested that if we're talking about deadlines or timelines for evaluations, that we should probably include something as far as possible negotiations, you know, with the superintendent. You know, what would the best time be for that?
Yeah, I had thought since watching you guys have that conversation in November and December, I thought, you know, if something like that could be spelled out, you know, it would just make it clearer for everybody moving forward that, you know, because periodically, every couple of years, you know, there is a good chance that there will be incoming board members in January when a contract would be offered or not offered. You know, so I thought it might make sense to put that in there.
I think that's an excellent suggestion and definitely needed. So do we want to hash that out now or do we want to give it some thought and try and figure out some? Bring it back to the policy committee to or personnel committee to hash that out? Where does that make the most sense? Probably Personnel Committee. Because they're the, that's the group that usually talks to and works through the contract negotiations with the superintendent.
Yeah, certainly we can talk about it there and then obviously we'd bring it back to the full board and then make a decision then.
All right. Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anna kind of hit on, she must have been watching the, must have had trouble sleeping some nights back in November and December, watching this take place. But little history and a decision made, we go on. I'm fine with that. Back when Holly and I got on about March, they wanted, they did the evaluation then. Then then board members, I do not believe I hear anymore, said that we shouldn't be involved in the process because we're too new. And so we took a little bit of offense to that and now they've switched it to November. Okay. But we've, we argued on behalf of the new board coming in to be involved in exactly what you said. Anna was in negotiation part of it. It's decided in December, while the old board's on, three of the members for sure were getting off back when I started the process in October. So I just, obviously, we wanted the whole board should be involved because the whole, the new board's going to be working two years with the superintendent, in this case, it's Karsten. The other, the other, the other issue about that on another level, whatever was brought up that I struggled with yet is we're negotiating in October, November, December. But that doesn't stop any superintendent from leaving in March, April and May for another position. So we're trying to protect that person to keep, this he or she to keep, but he or she could leave on point of the contract at any time after. So I struggled with that a little bit and maybe the policy committee can address that, those things that you can't stop somebody else from looking. I get that. I'm not here to hamper that. But I guess when they went, went from one position to another, it just, I I didn't think it was right. So that's why I spoke up and said I thought the new board should be involved in the in the negotiation. I think Arlen to some degree agreed with that too about the new board should be involved in the negotiation part of the superintendent contract going forward. And I will mute. Thank you.
Oh, I just noticed that Pam was kicked out of the meeting, so perhaps we should wait a minute or so.
I would, I would agree. As Vice Chair, we'll hold the meeting here unless Pam rejoins.
There she is.
I hit hang up instead of mute, so sorry.
Oh, okay. I didn't know. I didn't know if I'd do an investigation to see if Karsten kicked you out or not here, so.
No, I think that having it very crystal clear, cut and dry, I think will help us. We all know that, you know, we have to have a little bit of flexibility too. But I think if we have a general guideline and outline of what to follow, I think this board, I I think it will just all work out really well and and it'll be much easier process. So thank you for all that feedback. It's definitely a difficult thing to do all of those things. The superintendent evaluation is is a big job and that's what this board is, it's our, one of our number one priorities. I mean, he's our one and only employee, so we have to take that very seriously and we want to do its due diligence. But also, you know, the timeline needs to protect us as a district as well. We, you know, take Karsten off for a minute. Regardless of if Karsten's here or somebody else, we want to be able to also give us the best possible opportunity if we need to find a superintendent. When are they looking for a job? And we want to be ahead of the game a little bit and make sure that we have an opportunity for the very best possible candidate for our district at any point in in time. And so, you know, this timeline is extremely important when we think about what is in the best interest of our district. So thank you. This is really important discussion. All right, moving us on to board and committee meetings.
Madam Chair, Arlen and the
Okay, I missed that. Sorry, Arlen, when I hit.
You were, you were out when I signed in, so.
Sorry, Arlen.
I just want to say, in my opinion, Article Three, the way it's written looks very good to me and I think the timeline is right on that. I have not seen anything in the policy here, school board procedures that says when we will negotiate superintendent contracts. And I think that's good that we don't because if you do prior to put a timeline when we do it, you, I will fight it vehemently because I, you never know what circumstance might prompt something to be done. I'm looking at a larger district within 50 miles of us that ran into some issues and it's common that some districts have it. And so I think employment and contracts are a whole different thing and I don't think we need that in the procedures. That's just something that you automatically would do at a certain time.
Also, a good point. Well, those are, those are the kinds of things that this group needs to hash out and figure out is, you know, do we, do we want to have a timeline or, you know, do we want to be a little bit more flexible? I think that perhaps the Personnel Committee can have a discussion about that at our next meeting or in an agenda coming up and bring some ideas back to this board, if that would be okay. You know, should we have hard and fast deadlines or flexible deadlines? Should we not have anything in there at all? I think the the point is well taken, Arlen, about, you know, we, we don't necessarily want to also pigeon us into a hole that we can't get out of either. So anyway, if it's all right with everybody, I'll put it on our Personnel Committee agenda to just continue that conversation. All right, good. Sorry about that, Arlen. When I looked in the queue, it all has been gone because I left the meeting and came back. So my apologies for that. Board and committee meetings. We all know that we have a lot of committees that we are a part of. So this is the time of the the night that we should talk about how are those meetings going? Is it overwhelming? And also, do we, what about the timing of those meetings? That's a part of that discussion as well as we talked about here in this paper about the agendas and how those, what we talk about in our committees, how that gets brought back to the larger board. So I have a couple of people in the queue, I see, and I will turn it over, Arlen and then Holly.
Thank you. In general, things look all right to me, but I guess I'm looking for some clarification. Was probably heightened by some of my comments at a board meeting here in this past month or so. Are committee meetings minutes that are actually written and then approved by a committee? Or are they notes from a meeting that are presented to the board? And my opinion is for the most part that those are notes of what took place in a meeting because I know I've been to many committee meetings and we have not approved the minutes from the past meeting. There are committees I have served on that do have minutes that are approved also, but they're usually Health and Safety Committee and some other things. But I really have not participated in approving minutes on some of our basic. So I'm just throwing that out there.
And I can respond just to give context. Again, it's up to the board to decide which way you want to do it. In the past, we've treated committee meetings or we've we've set up notes. So they have not been officially approved by the committee before presentation to the board. You know, so we'd have the committee meeting, we'd have some notes and then we'd present that to the board. What this document has, you know, again, for discussion is that the committee would, or the committee chair would provide a verbal update at the next regular meeting. And then the committee would approve minutes at its next committee meeting. And then that would be posted, you know, with the board. So again, I'm okay either way, but I just want to give you some context.
And by doing that, what you just discussed, Karsten, we wouldn't see those minutes for like two months or at least six weeks, right? Because you'd have like Personnels meeting March 8th. And then we'd bring the minutes of March 8th to the March 15th meeting, right? And then
Correct.
And that, so we would review them and would we okay them that night? Or would we bring them back to the following meeting for approval?
What this indicates is that if we had the meeting on March 8th, which we will, and then the committee would review those rough, the rough draft of the minutes at the, at its first meeting in April. You know, and then it would go to the board the second meeting in April. So that's how it's written now. Again, you know, I'm okay regardless, just as long as we're on the same page.
Who's in the queue? Jim, are you next? No, Holly, sorry.
Holly is, yep.
Yeah, you know, I'm going to peel it back even a little bit further. I have a couple of things to say. One, who takes the minutes at our committee meetings? In the sense of who formalizes them for us, because I see them pop up. I'm thinking it's Lisa, but before we had a Lisa, nobody did it. So I like it that we're starting to get more organized in this area. That's very, very helpful. But let's do it with the intent that we don't want it to be more laborious for Lisa and for us. But I do think there should be some scripts that come off of our meetings. And Arlen, you said they should be just more informal notes that people should have when they go to the next meeting. And I don't know if that's, if that's the way it should be or if they should be formalized, agreed upon minutes from the committee.
Yeah, and just to answer your question, Holly, before Lisa started, there were two people who'd take notes. Jackie would take the Finance Committee notes and then I would take notes for the other committees. But after Lisa started, now she's doing the the committee meetings for the ones that I've done previously. Jackie has still been doing the the financial notes or minutes. So that's kind of where we are now.
Does that happen for every committee?
It happens for the the main committees. So Personnel, Operations, Legislative and Policy, and then Jackie does the Finance Committee meetings. Negotiations, I know Lisa's attended, I think, one or two sessions and did some notes, but I'm not sure if those are are as important to document informal minutes because we always have proposals going back and forth with negotiations.
Okay, all right. So I guess we we have to then just talk about what we want the outcome to be. Are we wanting it to be formal or informal?
Jim and then Arlen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good question, good dialogue. Ever since I've been on the board, we get, they're titled minutes from the committees. Minutes to me mean it's a formal document that was transpired as to what happened in at the meeting. If you want to call them notes, that's probably even a better way to handle it because then it's an informal dialogue as to what somebody had captured in a snapshot as to what happened on issues addressing the committee that day. I guess thinking more about it, it does get cumbersome to hold off in submitting the minutes for six to eight weeks after the meeting happens. But when something is submitted, it should be, it's, you know, we, it's not the official transcript of what happened because it hasn't been approved by anybody. And the board's not asked being, being asked to approve it unless they're asked to approve it in their consent agenda. And they shouldn't be because the committee hasn't even reviewed them to see if they should be tweaked at all. Sometimes they only come out a week, less than a week after the meeting. And we haven't had a chance to meet. You don't want to violate the meeting law. So maybe they should be called notes, notes of the meeting, of that committee meeting on that day. And it can be brought back to the following committee if they don't need to be adjusted, just leave them be as they are. And everybody in the in the board will know that the notes dictated what basically transpired during that committee meeting.
Arlen, Anna, Holly.
Yeah, and certainly I'd be okay with that suggestion. It kind of bridges the two perspectives. You know, we clearly identified as notes and then still give kind of informal You know, we clearly identified it as notes, uh, and then still give kind of informal descriptions.
Yeah, and I'll just piggyback when, yeah, because once we say minutes on there, that, to me, that's the official thing that happened at that meeting, just like the school board minutes, when, um, part, we approve them, Jennifer signs them, but they're called minutes because of a reason. And they're brought back to the next meeting, which is two weeks away normally, or three sometimes, but very soon turn, uh, very quick turnaround compared to the committees.
Arlen?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I want to clarify, who was taking notes from the meeting? That's the correct word to use, I believe. Um, I have taken notes when I've been on committees, and Carson was unable to be there. We were continuing on, and, and, uh, I believe it was Operations Committee, it could have been. Uh, but when somebody else in the district wasn't taking it, somebody at the meeting took those notes and wrote them down so they could be forwarded on. And Jim has nailed it right on the head. That's probably the hangup we got, is that we're calling those, these items minutes from the meeting, and they really are notes from what I've experienced most of the time, because I don't recall approving them at the next meeting as minutes in most of these committees that I've been on. So, and I do think it'd be very cumbersome to wait until a month later meeting to approve them and then show them to the board. I think that's cumbersome, and, and, uh, and I think that if the notes are inaccurate, the fact that our board members, our committee is composed of board members, if the notes are inaccurate, there's an opportunity at that next meeting to clarify that. If, uh, the committee felt that those notes were inaccurate, they could clarify if the board has a problem with it. So I, I, I'm very supportive of the idea of having notes taken and getting it to the board, uh, as soon as we can for the next meeting, so that we have this information in front of us.
I, yep, I agree with that. Um, I think calling them notes, um, is good. Also, um, in my understanding of parliamentary procedures, um, minutes record action items, and committees can't really truly have action items. We can't vote on anything in a committee, so we can have discussion about things and work through a lot of things, but it still has to come before the board for an actual decision. Uh, and then that decision is what should be recorded in minutes. So I think that, yeah, I would just call them notes and go from there.
Holly?
Yes, discussion notes, perfect. Okay, that just was like full circle from my original question. No, this was my other question that I didn't ask prior. So I know that in Red Wing, it has been past practice that the board chair and the vice chair meet with the superintendent every week, or every other week. And to me, that's always felt a little imbalanced. So I don't know how it started. I don't know if it's best practice across all school boards that the, the chair and the vice chair get their own meeting with the superintendent to discuss the agenda or to discuss other things. But it feels like there might be things that are discussed that maybe we should all be discussing for the first time through, instead of having a couple of people know what's going to happen prior to the agenda. So two things I'm thinking of is, one, if the board chair and the vice chair have a, have a meeting with the superintendent, somehow we're informed of the topics. Like, there's a note that comes out from the superintendent, these were the topics that were discussed. Or those meetings don't happen, and we, we conduct board business in person. You know, or online, because it, it just, and it's not Jim and Pam now. This has been a past practice in Red Wing that's always confused me, since I've gotten on the board. Like, wait a minute, it feels like there's two agendas. There's the one with the board chair and the superintendent, and then there's the agenda that the other board, the, the rest of the board is supposed to be working on. So that's something I just want us to think about when we're talking about committees or meetings or, or different things like that.
Yeah, and I think that's a, an excellent question. Uh, and, you know, the important thing for me is to be on the same page regardless of what the decision is made. Um, did the city go through, uh, a process where the Agenda Committee, uh, became a, a public meeting? I, I can't remember, uh, or not. I've never explored that. Um, and, um, uh, but to give more context, I, I think when I first started here, I would meet periodically with Mitch Bolt, who was the, the board chair at the time. I don't think it was a weekly thing. Uh, but then as time went on, uh, the meetings with the board chair became weekly. Uh, and then, just a few years ago, again, I don't remember who was the chair at the time, but then, uh, the chair also wanted the vice chair to, to participate in those meetings as well. And so that's where we are now. Uh, I find them very valuable, um, you know, personally. Um, uh, but, you know, so there's that value. Uh, and then if the other way, I, I hear what you're saying, Holly, because, uh, you know, I, I just, I hesitate sharing, uh, information with just one board member and not all board members. And so I'm trying to explore how to, to best do that. Uh, so sometimes I'm not responding to emails right away. I'd rather, you know, share that information in administrative report or an email to everyone. And so, you know, I think, I think your question leads to some other questions too, as far as how we want to treat that information.
Well, and I'll just piggyback on that. I, it's been a very valuable time for me as well, because the, the main agenda is to figure out what the agenda is. So that's, that's an important topic that's on my to-do list every single time we meet. The second piece is, what are we going to do for, for workshops? Um, and who's going to facilitate them? Who's going to lead them? Do we need a speaker? Those kinds of things is what we talk about. I always take notes, um, for all of those meetings. I'm happy to share, here's the list of things that we talked about, if that would be helpful. Um, quite honestly, if I got back an hour of my week, that wouldn't hurt my feelings any either. But I think that, um, it's very important, whoever the chair is, has a good, um, open line of communication, especially in the pandemic. It was really important for, for me to be able to know what was going on in a timely manner. Um, and so, you know, I think that that was important. Um, Jim and Ireland, do you want to share anything more about those meetings?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was going to bring it up tomorrow with us, so it's great for Holly to bring it up too, a little bit. Um, I find it valuable to have that time to, to, uh, see what's going on. But, because one or two people, um, um, may not be the only ones that should be, um, coming up with the agenda for the next meeting or two. And that's why we have it in here on the thing here on page eight, you people can email stuff. But I, I, I think what I'm, what I'm piggybacking to, and we'll share, we'll talk again tomorrow, because we are meeting tomorrow, because we have a board meeting next, next Monday. And maybe we need to meet those Monday, those Tuesdays prior to board meetings, and not the other Tuesdays, give you back another day or two of your month, Pam. Um, but, uh, I, I know when I first got on, I wanted to get something on the agenda, and, and Carson wouldn't put it on there, because the chair didn't, well, hadn't had a chance to talk to the chair. So I added it at the meeting, and then another board member got upset because I added something at the meeting. And it's like, well, why? I couldn't go, they wouldn't let me put it on at the agenda, so I could, you could have, it was a board member had the right to add something to the agenda at any board meeting. Um, so with that, I think, I think Carsten, Holly's idea of Carsten sending out an email to the board member saying, these are topics we're looking at discussing in the next meeting or two, just an FYI for you, further information to come. If you have any, anything else to ask, add to the agenda, please share it with him and all of us, so. Um, but I, and the other thing is, you know, everybody has a right to schedule a meeting with the superintendent too, on a weekly or regular or monthly or semi-bimonthly meeting. Um, that works, but, uh, yeah, I think, I think we kind of, it's nice to meet, but I think we could probably cut the meetings back, Madam Chair, to maybe a couple of times a month, instead of, it'll free up a couple of hours of his time to, to do something too. So we'll talk tomorrow again, because we are going to meet tomorrow, because we have a board meeting next Monday, so. Um, and then I would, we'll just, I'll ask, and Carson's listening, we can, he'll send out an email later that day to say, these are what we are looking at discussing down the road. Fair enough?
Yep. Jennifer and Ireland.
I appreciate your question, Holly. I had the same question that I wanted to bring up. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate the three of you meeting. I think it's important. I think it's basically an executive committee that's kind of setting the agenda, making, um, the decisions to make sure that our meetings are, um, fine-tuned and, um, focused. And so I appreciate that, but it would be nice to have more information about what is discussed at that meeting. I know I've brought up a few ideas of things that I would like to see on the agenda that have not been on the agenda yet, and I know that we have so much going on, and I appreciate that they likely will be. Um, but just to know what the discussion was and why those things, um, were not addressed, um, that, that would be good information for us to know.
Just a question, Jennifer. I, have you sent something to me? I have not received any emails from you or phone calls about topic items.
I have not. I have been sending them to Pam and Carson.
Oh.
Um, and there are things that have been, I mean, the, number of things have been brought up in giving information. Um, but just some of the, especially the equity things that I brought up tonight have been things that have been on my mind, um, that I think are important, even though COVID is number one, and it's in every meeting, we need to discuss it. I do think that equity is a huge part of what's happening with COVID, and it, it needs to happen now. Um, i- it's just too important to not address. And I appreciate Nikki bringing it up every, every time we meet, so that it, we don't lose track of that. Um, but I, I just, I would like to know more information about what happens at your meetings. Not that I don't want them to happen, because I, I appreciate that they're valuable to all three of you, and, um, like I said, help make the school board meetings go more efficiently. I would just like to know what the discussion topics are.
And I'll just, I'll just add, uh, equity is a big thing. Um, I would, I would ask that you include me to be equal then, the equity, not just two out of the three. So I'm part of that, as you anticipated, so, but for some reason, I was not included.
Absolutely, Jim. I appreciate that. I, I guess I was just thinking Superintendent and Chair, and that's, um, where I was, but you're absolutely right.
Yeah, and, um, uh, again, just for the purpose of context, the relevant policy is, uh, Policy Two oh three point five. Uh, and that says, uh, while all school board members may provide input, it shall be the responsibility of the school board chair and superintendent to develop, prepare and arrange the order of items for the tentative school board meeting agenda, you know, for each meeting. Uh, now, that's what the policy says, but, you know, of course, over the last few years, we have the chair, vice chair, and superintendent kind of meeting to discuss those topics. So, uh, again, as long as we're on the same page, I think that's the important thing. Another thing that, uh, we could, uh, bring back again is a more comprehensive list of upcoming agenda topics by meeting date. I used to do that quite a bit years ago. I'd list every single meeting and then the tentative topics. Now, those would change a lot with time, because it's hard to predict what's going to happen five months later. Uh, but that might, um, help, uh, as far as what Jennifer suggested in terms of knowing that, okay, we're going to talk about equity during the workshop in April, and it's listed there, so it's not just Carsten talking about that, that it's actually there. So that might be one partial step, uh, but then we can, uh, you know, follow through with the ideas that were brought up tonight too.
I think that's a really great suggestion, Carson. And I think when we went through the strategic plan, that was part of the recommendation in the end was to revisit each of those goals on a regular basis and find out what's happening in each of those areas. And so that needs to be put on agendas on a regular rotating basis. So if we had that all listed out, um, and maybe as a, um, as an attachment in our board packet, that might be helpful as well. Uh, Arlen, you're in the queue.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna probably be the one that's responsible for getting this to where it is, and I'm not sure if it's right where it's at right now with the Superintendent, Chair, Vice Chair, but I'll put the history out there. When I became Chair, usually the board chair met with Carsten to work on the agenda for the upcoming meetings. Um, our agenda packet was not coming out until Thursday or Friday, and, and we worked on trying to get that agenda packet out earlier to kind of match up with the, uh, policy, so that there's time for board members to read the packet and still ask questions from Carson if they would like. And those meetings weren't regular all the time at the same day, and it got to be a difficult time trying to schedule it. And finally found a time on Tuesday morning, which was the day before the agenda usually goes out, that Carson could free up for an hour and work on the agenda. And as board chair, I wanted to make sure the vice chair was informed what was going on in case they had to take over the meetings. So it was good to have the vice chair attend. Plus Pam had a desire to, um, express a desire to become chair someday, and I thought it was good training to see what's going on in those meetings and stuff, and it's kind of evolved to being that. But Carson, what he just stated here, it is exactly right. The agenda is set by the superintendent and the board chair. And, uh, I've always felt that the, uh, if the vice chair is there, it's at the discretion, invitation, whatever of the chair, whether that person is there. And I think it's good that the vice chair is there to be in on what's going to happen, especially now with COVID and, uh, online learning and, and Pam, we lost Pam for a little bit here tonight. Uh, we got her back right away, luckily, but, um, the chair, vice chair has got to be ready to step in and kind of know what's going on in that agenda in the event the chair can't carry it through at the meeting. So, uh, trying to find the exact right mix for that is maybe a little difficult. I tried to work mainly with agenda items and stuff in my discussions when Pam was there with me. Uh, when Pam was there as chair and I was vice chair, I did throw out some ideas on agenda timing, because they were talking about, should this be this month or this month? Um, but, uh, it certainly is the chair's responsibility what takes place in that meeting, in my opinion.
Holly?
Um, yes, thank you. Okay, so to, to, to synthesize it, is it important or is it prudent that we then call it the Agenda Committee? And that way it has a little bit more transparency?
We absolutely can call it that. I mean, I, I have no problem with that.
And then Carson sends out an email, you know, Tuesday or Wednesday, the Agenda Committee discussed X, Y, and Z. And then that way it can trigger any thought in our brains, like, oh, yeah, that did happen, or, oh, I did talk to somebody about that, or, oh, I want to know more about that.
Perfect. So what I'm hearing is maybe the Agenda Committee meets with the superintendent on the Tuesday prior to a school board meeting? Or may, and, uh, you know, I gotta say, I, I like the Tuesday prior to a workshop. Um, and that can be, you know, maybe penciled in, because there are some times where it's very helpful for me as the chair to know exactly what, you know, do we need to, what else do we need to do or put together to make that workshop run? I don't want to waste anybody's time here. I want to make sure that I've got all of my ducks in a row prior to that workshop, so that we can go bing, 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 and, and, you know, I, and be succinct. So, um, that's my own personal request, is that, you know, if there's a workshop coming up that I need to, to get a little more done. And also, you know, maybe in preparation for an evaluation too. I mean, we might need to have an extra meeting or two in there somewhere, but we'll be a hundred percent transparent. I'll let you know about those. But I think twice a month, the Tuesdays prior to, uh, meeting, and then maybe a workshop in there here or there. But I like your suggestion, Holly, an Agenda Committee. And we can add that to our list of committees. We'll do Superintendent, um, Chair and Vice Chair. Two hours a month, perfect.
Yeah, because you're already doing it, so just give it a name.
Yep. No, I like that suggestion a lot. Thank you. And then, uh, Carson, do you want, we'll be the note taker. One of us will be the note taker, and we'll send it out. This is the items that we've discussed, and remember, if you have any agenda items, make sure you get it to us before that Tuesday, so that, and be very clear, Jennifer, because I know you've, you've sent a lot of, um, emails about, hey, tell me more information about this or that. But I, I, I don't think it was clear to me, at least, that it was a topic that you wanted to see on the agenda. So just, if that's something that you, any of you would like to make sure, to just let me know very clearly. So just if that's something that you, any of you would like to make sure to just let me know very clearly that let's have this be an agenda topic, that would be helpful. Perfect. Arlen?
Yeah, I just wondering if you might wanna think this through a little bit, if you're going to call it a committee. Um, does that make it a public meeting? Uh, I, I don't have the answer. Um, so I just, and maybe it should be a public meeting. Uh, I'm not gonna say one way or another. Um, past what, what maybe I was wrong in the past with what I was doing, I don't know. But the minute you start calling a committee and you take notes, that's great. But if it is a committee, does that mean that the public is allowed to participate, come and view it at that time?
I, I have no problem. Got nothing to hide. You're not, you're on mute, Pam. Still on mute, Madam Chair.
That's right, sorry. Um, I have nothing to hide either. It's, there's no secret agendas. Um, so you know, if we have it open to the public, I'm fine with that too. So not a big deal at all, um, if we do that. Holly?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna put on my nerd brain. I did do two um, school board workshop trainings with MSBA. And the guy who was doing it, um, the first one I went to, he was like, do everything in public. Just, just do everything in public. Try to stay away from backdoor conversations or innuendos of conversations or, and that was very, you know, good for me to hear because it reaffirmed that transparency really is the way to go when we're discussing public dollars. And the agenda has to be equal amongst all the players. So I was just nerding out on nerding. I can't still talk, but nerding out on what he was lecturing us about for three hours.
Sounds good. All right. So are we ready to move on to Article Four?
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is that, you know, we do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow at eight thirty. There's no way we could give a three day notice. And so if we do start considering them public meetings, we'd like to start that uh, probably on March twenty second, when we're bringing back all the other board meetings and, and committee meetings, I would guess. I, I suppose we could start it earlier and just post it as an in-person meeting.
Sounds good.
Hey. There is a little bit more information in, if we keep scrolling down in Article Four about minutes. And this was one where we had in our committee talked about fleshing out that information a little bit more about what specifically gets included in minutes. Because by parliamentary procedures, like action items need to be recorded. So you need to have, you know, what the motion was, who sec- who seconded, and then what the votes were. Um, but of course, it's helpful to have a little bit of context information or like when it's the consent agenda, like what were the items in the consent agenda? Um, so I think this was an area where Carson was maybe gonna look at MSBA and see if they had documentation of like what needed to be in minutes. Um, so that we can have it really clear and that way that doesn't become an issue of contention down the road.
MSBA does have that and I just did the clerk training to learn more about what to include there. So um, yeah, they have it all written out really um, easy to follow. And it's not much. It's really just action items and your consent agenda is really all you have to include and who is there.
Did they talk about Jennifer and the committee meetings at all?
Um, they did not focus on the committee meetings. No. I, I believe they do have information on that though.
Okay, we'll get that. I think that'd be good one because Anna hit the nail on the head there with the action items. Committees should be making a, a recommendation to the board on a topic to yea or nay it. Um, usually by consensus and we're not, we're not um, advocate, we're not saying, we're saying that we go forward on the recommendation or not going forward with the recommendation for the board. Because they'll ask us and they should ask us, as we asked the superintendent, his, his or her recommendation um, on a topic instead of having us do the work too. That's what we have the admin team for.
Yeah, the one thing that we'll wanna check, and I think Jennifer and Arlen have both alluded to it in the past is uh, how do we list the approval of the consent agenda items? Uh, because I think there's an argument that you list, for example, the hirings as one motion or maybe even each hiring as a separate motion uh, or not. Uh, and so I think that's one issue. And then kind of a related issue is, you know, we have the official meeting minutes that are approved by the board and signed by the clerk. Uh, but then exactly what should we provide to the local newspaper? And uh, I think big nine uh, schools are generally uh, not sharing as much information as we have just because there are videotapes, there's the official minutes, there are other sources of getting all the details. Uh, and my guess is that they've done that to save money. So, um, you know, but I think that's another discussion point that we can uh, have.
Just real quick, Madam Chair, if I may, uh, good cop, good cop coverage or conversation. Uh, I, I, I struggle with somebody saying, just go back to the video and look at the video. Because after four and a half hour meetings, where do you find the doggone thing, you know? You know, we need to be a little bit more specific in our minutes to give us an idea what the dialogue was about. And uh, I think Jennifer going to that training will help uh, get that down the road for us, so.
Thanks for bringing that up, Anna. You're, you're right. And we had gone through some of those um, past minutes. And for whatever reason, Arlen, those, what you had noticed was missing just started disappearing in twenty twenty in January. So um, we're not sure how that, how that transpired or happened, but uh, happy to get that back in there too. That makes perfect sense.
Well, it took me a year to figure it out then, didn't it?
Well, we've all had a lot on our minds lately.
Right. I just happened to catch it that month. I'm sorry.
No, you know, don't apologize. It's uh, best practice. So I think we need to be held accountable to that. Thank you. Uh, Article Four, communications, anything have anything, uh, anybody have anything they wanna talk about there? Um, I think it's just really important to highlight that, you know, we do get as a board, a lot of emails that are sent to all of us. Um, and really, um, our policies state that it's best practice if one person responds for all of us. Um, you know, usually I will say, thank you for your feedback. Um, we appreciate your um, comments or whatever, but I don't really go into it a lot, um, only because it's really difficult. Um, Carson, do you wanna give a little bit more background on how we came to that? How the, this was before at my time, so the history of that.
I know when I first started in Red Wing, uh, board members would get, you know, emails from time to time, uh, especially with complaints. And I think, again, everyone's trying to do the right thing. Uh, but at the time, uh, there could be five, six, even eight different investigations going on because of one email. So, you know, I would investigate or ask someone else to. And then each individual board member felt obligated that they needed to do the same thing. Uh, and so just imagine, you know, how much time was taken because we had different investigations and they were comparing notes about what really happened. So that's when we started this particular uh, procedure. Uh, and the thinking at the time, and that may have changed since then, but you know, we just want one person to respond. Uh, but then, you know, I think, you know, like Pam just mentioned, uh, you know, board members, you know, often want to at least acknowledge that they've received it, they've read it, thank you for, for sharing your thoughts. Uh, and so that's why some of the verbiage has changed. Um, and typically, um, you know, I'll say that, you know, as per board protocol, I resp- uh, I respond on behalf of the board, you know, you may or may not receive individual responses. So, um, you know, that's what I typically say. And then I get bored saying that and so then I'll try to change it up a little bit. And uh, now, fast forward a few years, we are getting a lot more emails sent to all board members. A lot more, you know, yeah, maybe my first year we'd get twenty uh, total for the year. Now we're getting oftentimes more than twenty uh, for a particular meeting and that's good. We wanna hear from people. Don't get me wrong. But um, responding uh, to those, and I think that's important to respond as promptly as possible. Uh, but that is very time consuming. So, um, and I'm not suggesting a change. I think it's important to hear from people. It's important to at least acknowledge that we've received it, uh, but it is an issue.
Uh, Arlen, you're in the queue?
Yeah, I don't see this in communications here, but um, I know uh, communication between board members and the public and things like Facebook and stuff can can um, maybe get quite involved if you aren't careful. Um, personally myself, I thought when I came on the board, I'm gonna great. I wanna communicate to the public. I, I, I got a Facebook account. I was all ready to do stuff and all of a sudden I started seeing issues with somebody liking a post that they shouldn't look. And in the end, I never friended anybody, um, except my wife and uh, my brother. And I just wanna caution everybody to be very careful how involved you get in, involved with social media. Uh, and the public can just really literally tear you apart. Uh, they could do a lot of things. I don't know if we need a policy on social media, but uh, uh, I am a little concerned how things can go and a couple controversial issues. COVID nineteen has been one of them. And the board's response and, and people not liking the action and it's not only board members and school staff are getting into it on social media and I have been reading some of them, but I'm just gonna put it out there that to be very careful how you use social media.
Holly and then Nikki?
Um, yeah, after this um, situation with the city council and many constituents stating over and over again, I emailed them and they didn't respond. They don't respond in a timely manner. Why aren't they responding to us? Really brought up my, we've been inundated with emails and requests asking situations. And one time I copied and pasted a response to like three different people. And somebody's like, oh my gosh, you're lazy. You don't even know how to have an original response. Like literally, I wanted to get the same information and I didn't wanna deviate from what I was saying to people about a certain issue. So you can call it lazy. I call it efficient and clear, you know. But it makes me wonder if there should be kind of a response that, that we are showing the community, that we do respond. You know, or, or we discuss it openly on how we want to go about doing this. But that was one of the things I heard loud and clear from people. Like if I email my representative, I want an answer. I get that. It's just food for thought. There's, there's no.
I know. It's a struggle, isn't it? Cuz you know, it's huh, you know, you, you open the, the can of worms and it's uh, it's, it can be pretty complicated. You're exactly right. You're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't in some instances too. You can't uh, please everybody and it's really hard, which is why I think this uh, boards in, in the past have had this conversation and they've decided that they're gonna leave it to the superintendent to respond to everybody, you know, in a uniform way so that everybody does get acknowledged. Um, and uh, you know, it, not everyone's getting seven or eight responses or not. You know, some people get three and some people get five and some people get one. And so, you know, there is merit to having this conversation about how do we wanna tackle that? Um, in email responses. Uh, Nikki? And then Anna?
I um, with a lot of communication under my belt here and many different diverse systems. Um, I, this is uh, honestly, I'm gonna give you guys props for this one because I'm actually trying to get HRC on the same path as how this one is operated. I think we've gotten ourselves kind of in um, uh, whirlwind when we have one respond and then it, it's just, I think it just works better that if Carson responds on behalf for many reasons. Um, A, I'm not, I'm not an emailer and so it's just like the time consuming. Um, so that's that. But on a note of what Arlen had said, um, I'm on social media very, I'm a very huge advocate of the things that I'm incredibly impassioned about. And one right now that's a huge issue and especially in Red Wing is the racial issue. And so um, there's many things that I myself am working on as too because I have trauma. I have a lot of historical trauma, but being allowed in many positions in Red Wing has allowed that so I can be a key component in being a middle person when we have to merge all of our people together and move forward. You know, there, we, we have to heal that piece. So it's really important that I do my background work on it on my end so I can be that, that voice and um, so, but I think that Anna communicates very professionally and very beautifully to our people on social media. And so that, that's allowed me to be able, I, I get it because as a person who has many different issues, if I keep speaking and I, it, it's, it's not intentional for us. Um, I keep speaking, I keep speaking. Here's an, an example as a mom. I tell my kids this thing. I tell them this, nice, nice, nice. Nobody listens, nobody listens. And then kaboom, it blows. Because now I got your attention, but it shouldn't have to get that, that far. So um, I really like that Anna is responding and I think she's getting a very actually good response. Not, I haven't seen any negatives from Anna. Anna can speak for herself on her end. But I think she, you know, having certain people that have that gift, she is a neutral ground person, so she can, she doesn't um, when we involve conversations, it, you, you can get an aggressive, which will get aggressive from me. Well, yeah, on, on a lot of issues, you're gonna get that aggression because I have that passion, that, that um, that trauma, that history. Um, no excuse, moving forward and healing that. But that's where our great friend Anna comes in and she can explain beautifully on behalf of all of us on, you know, without tripping anybody and getting them upset. And then everybody feels, yes, thank you. I feel heard. I feel valued. Thank you for answering that. So thank you for bringing that up, Arlen, on, on that issue on social media. So within this, not only just the community, too, we're gonna find our people that have their strong suits and hopefully they'll just naturally fall into their seat. And then that's the beauty about all of us being very diverse. We have our gifts to bring this. And like I said, I told Arlen, I go, not gonna lie, I wasn't scared joining the board. But I was like, oh geez, what kind, just because of what I heard from what everybody else had said, what kind of fight am I gonna go up against? But when I actually got in on the inside, I'm, was so thankful because I see all of you as individuals. I see why, you don't even have to tell me why you came here. It's through the work that you do. You know, we all have that important piece. So once we just kinda get through things like this and be on the same page and stuff, I think we can really soar high and making huge strides and change for this district.
Really well said. Thanks, Nikki. Uh, Anna and then Jim?
Well, thank you, Nikki, for um, your compliments. Um, I do try, you know, on social media, I think I try not to put my own personal opinions out there, you know? Um, but just to kind of share the information, especially when, you know, there are a lot more people watching our board meetings now. Um, and, but people aren't necessarily watching it with the same attention that those of us who are in the meeting are, you, you know, are experiencing. So people will say like, oh, I only watched this part. What happened? And you know, people are trying to recap. So I try to just, you know, when I see that type of thing to jump in and say, you know, these were the things that were decided and this is what this means, you know, based on my understanding of things. Um, but without putting, trying to not put my own personal opinions in there. Um, so I mean, it could be something that we wanna include in this section to just say that, you know, individual board members um, need, I don't, I don't know how to. Need, I don't, I don't know how to word it, but you know, exercise caution that you do you do not speak for the district as a whole. Um on social media because you know, that's something that I try to say, like if somebody asks me a question, I can say like, well, from my understanding, based on this. Document, this is what this means, but this is the person you really need to talk to about it. Um because I don't know all of the workings of the district and it's important for me to not give out misinformation, even if it's um. You know, unintentional. Um one thing that I think. I just wonder if it's a possibility. Um Lisa sends out a great summary of the board meeting to the. District, you know, to the the staff and I think. Perhaps something like that. It's not official minutes, but maybe if something like that can go out. Um or be posted on Facebook or something like that because, you know, I think it was Jim was saying, you know, the meeting, when a meeting is four hours long. If you wanna see what happened in this part, like who wants to sit through four hours of that to get to that information and. We're not gonna approve the minutes for a minimum of two weeks, you know, until we have a meeting again. Um. So I just wonder if there's something that, if there's more that we can do with communications to and you know, of course, when it's a big issue like the back to school. Carsten sends out an email to the, you know, the entire district to say, this is a major decision that was made that is affecting everybody and, you know, this is what the. Plan is now going forward. Um but for some of those. Smaller decisions, I guess, or you know, less impactful. I just wonder if there's a way to to maybe get that information out. With the understanding that it's not official minutes, but that. You know, just to to keep that communication open and to shut down the um misinformation where, you know, somebody. Interpreted something differently as they were listening to a meeting while cooking dinner for their kids, you know, like I know how that happens. So you know, just to make sure that we're getting good information out to the public and that the public can then be more engaged and um. Know what's going on. I don't know what the solution is, but this is something that I've been thinking about.
Yeah, Lisa and I can come up with uh with a plan on how to uh better share that with more than just staff members. Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
Really good suggestion. Uh Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um communication. It's really one of the thorns in many organizations, problems and relationships. On on boards. So any way we can improve on communication. Let's go. I think that's a great idea, Anna, about sharing that information that Lisa takes her time to compile with more than just the staff. Um so I think that's great. Uh emails, um back when I was a commissioner for sixteen years, I got a bunch of phone calls, emails. Visits, all that, so you wanna respond back to them somehow. Um I've just taken the approach myself. Anybody comes at me very pointed or negative. I kinda, I'm not gonna stir the pot and probably communicate back with that person. Um so I just let it lie. Uh I don't do social media. Arlen, uh I hope you have more than two friends or at least at least your wife and brother are still your friend. So um because I don't do Facebook, but people do tell me what's on social media. I do have that. Um. And and I'm old enough to realize computers, many of you weren't even born when computers came into existence. Um I surround myself with good people. That's why about computers, computers and how I can do that, but uh end of the day. Communication is uh uh one of the major stumbling blocks that boards. Ja- um businesses and relationships suffer. And any way we can improve on that, uh we'll we'll pay dividends for all of us for years to come. Sorry, Arlen.
Holly?
Uh yes, Jim, I completely agree with you. Communication is the bane of the existence. And Anna, I have to say, every time I see your response, I feel a sense of relief. Oh, like, oh, good, Anna did good. She put it right out there. I don't have to respond. I don't have to do anything. Because you are tempted to kind of wanna clarify or support something and then you got this nice little diatribe and I'm like, good job, Anna. I don't have to do anything. So yes, Nikki, you're right, but I I did wanna say it is hard to know when, but Jim, hearing you say that you do respond. To people, that's where I was, kind of my head was at with thinking about when the city council made their decision and. People wanted answers. Sometimes the answer isn't the answer, but it's a response.
And sometimes, you know, we forget sometimes who put us here. It's the people that voted, the public, the those business owners, the the. The homeowners, the parents, the senior citizens, those are the ones that are here. We need to. Remember, you know, the reason we're here is they've cast trust and votes for us to be here, to be one of the seven on this board during this time period, so.
I think sometimes where we get tripped up is, you know, I'll get a call from a constituent saying. My daughter didn't get this at school and I want you to do something about it, you know, and and so then, you know, the. The knee jerk reaction is, I gotta fix this for you, right? But you know, you always go back to, well, who's your teacher? Who's your principal? Have you talked to them? Here's the superintendent's number, you know, and not get deep down diving into those investigations. That's not our job. That's not our role, but thank you for reaching out. Your voice is really important to me and I really appreciate your, you know, you. Your continued support of the district. Here's here's this person that I think will be able to help you, so. Uh Jennifer?
I have two things. One, um I would agree with what Nikki and Holly said, Anna. I really appreciate your comments on Facebook. And social media, um but one thing that we as a board need to be careful of too on social media is not responding. I think it's great that Anna does, but then. The rest of us should not also because we have to be careful about having a quorum there. Um that's why I don't even like your comments, Anna. Um even though I do, I love them, but I don't, um just to make, just to be careful of that. Um and then the second thing is, um just, I think it's important that we remember that communication also is listening. And um I think that's something that we really need to work on is how can we pull community members in. Um to be able to hear their voices and community members from all parts of the community. Um I, you know, we heard from a large. Um group about going back to school, but we didn't hear from a. Good section of our district. Um and so how can we make people more comfortable coming to us? And telling us what they think and what they need and how they feel. Um and I know um Nikki is doing some good work on that and I. I can't wait to hear more about what she's got planned, but um I just think we, that needs to be a focus for us.
Well said. Alright, it's already eight o'clock. Um Article five is on policies. Article six is on planning. The planning cycle, human resource plan, financial plan, facilities plan, and then Article seven is school board members. Um does anybody have anything of those last three articles that really need to be addressed tonight? Glaring pieces of those three articles? The other thing I'll ask you is, in this uh draft of a booklet here on procedures for school board. Is there anything that isn't in here that should be included? And maybe that's a, you know, something food for thought that we don't have to address right now, but this is a working document, a work in progress. Um you know, it's not gonna be carved in stone, so let's continue to have these conversations. I think this is so important. For us to have these conversations, so we're all on the same page, we're all operating under the same umbrella and um I'm so glad that we've had this. This discussion and conversation tonight because I think it's been very valuable. Um so definitely keep that at the forefront of your mind. Maybe on your desk, we can, you know, let let Carson or myself or Jim know, you know, if there are things that we'd like to add that we can bring back to this group. To um add into that booklet. Um the next piece on our agenda is meeting effectiveness and efficiency, which I'm trying to do right now by moving that stuff along. Um there's a good list of many ideas, net fourteen, um on how we can continue moving our meetings along. Um and you know, I I'll take a lot of credit for having some long meetings because there's a fine line between making sure everybody has their say. And being able to bring discussions to the table, but also being able to move us forward. Um so I I always err on the side of being too long because I wanna make sure you all have an opportunity to say what's on your mind. And I never want anyone to feel like I've cut themselves off or I've cut you off. Um and so, you know, I I will fully admit that. That's a struggle of mine. Um but are there other things that I can help or um we can do as a group to keep moving our meetings along? So we don't have any more four hour meetings and I I get that the four hour meeting or the four and a half hour meeting had to happen because there was a lot going on. At that moment and hopefully we won't have to ever tackle that kind of four and a half hour meeting again, but um. I, you know, I just wanna keep moving us forward and being really good at what we do.
Madam Chair, you and I, I think we've talked, we just informally about stuff. Um one is, um and I probably maybe I brought this up, so if I'm preaching to the choir, let just tell me I've already said this. Having people come and present to us is great, but don't read what they sent to us for us to read. We read it, then they, sometimes they start reading it to us. That's counterproductive. Um if somebody doesn't wanna read it, that's their own problem. But I take the time to read it, then they get read to me. We can save time there. Just bullet points, a few topics, any questions, cause we've already had the i- item. Um read by ourselves because they sent it to us in the packet. Um the other thing is the virtual meetings. Do take longer because you have to do all the roll call and all that and I think. Months down the road and we get more in person, I I I'm hoping that um our timeframes will be less as we. Venture into the in-person thing whenever down the road. Um I just, that's just my take, but uh and we talked about. Shortening up the people that presenting because they send the information out of either a presentation, however they do it and then uh. Then we can go forward to it, so.
Well, and I think one thing that will also help us, um is that if we list out all of our school board meetings for the whole year, um we don't have to. You know, make the next agenda super heavy and then the next one light. I mean, we can balance things out a little bit better, so I think if we have that. I I'm a visual person, so if we have every single meeting lined up on a piece of paper and we, you know, stagger out the agenda items. Um you know, some that we can, we can spread out some of those presentations, so we're not having so many at once or back to back. Anna, you're in the queue.
There we go. Um yeah, so I have two thoughts. One is about the presentations. I wonder if. Some of them could be shifted to workshops, um because I think some of the the presentations. Uh I'm thinking about ones in particular before I was a board member, um but watching them, um you know, I. I found them really interesting and, you know, good information, but yet. There, they weren't really, a couple that I'm thinking of didn't really have an action item, you know, it wasn't something that was being proposed. That needed to be voted on. Um and as a board member, I definitely wanna hear from all of these different, you know, like the. Um you know, when a new curriculum is being introduced and how that's gonna work or or, you know, a new program or changes in a a big program like the. Flight path program. Um I think the more information that we can all have and the chance to meet with those people who are responsible for it, the better. But you know, in a meeting when we have a lot of things that need to be decided upon, I'm not sure that that's the best time for that informational type stuff. Um and you know, like you said earlier, Pam, you'd rather have like a three hour meeting than two. Meetings that are less than three hours, you know, and so that's a a fair argument too that, you know. Maybe it's better to have them in a meeting than to have that be like a separate thing, but if there are. Areas in which, you know, kind of a. A presentation about something that's not a pressing decision issue fits in with a workshop discussion. Uh topic, maybe that's a good place to put that. Um so it's informative, but not based on the decision making. Um the other thing that I. I think it's more an issue with the virtual meeting format, but. When we're in this virtual format, when I have the floor, I wanna get out all of my questions, you know, because like it's gonna take a while to cycle back around to me. Um but I wonder, then sometimes I think we kind of end up on these little rabbit trails. That I wonder if it's easier, kind of like when we went through, you know, that the document that we just went through the handbook to say like, okay, you know. Item one, or do you have questions related to, you know, the. This specific aspect of it and then who has questions about that? Do you have questions about, you know, like for the back to school plan? Do you have questions about? The the safety, questions for Shonda, and I know we've done some of that. Um so it's based on like who you have a specific question for and I think that that might help too. Um I think some of that is just the nature of a. A virtual meeting where we can't have the the faster, more organic conversations without talking over each other. Um but I just, I don't know if maybe that's another area that we could tweak a little bit to kind of break down those. Um conversations.
Thanks, Anna. Good points. Nikki?
Um I personally, um I don't like the email. I like the in-person discussion. I'm. And this is my very left brain, um very oral, traditional people. So being able to discuss and hearing and also when this is um something that. I am many other indigenous people go through that many white people don't understand, but when we enter into a world of governments and documents. The system was literally created to um not benefit people like us, so and it comes off of that. Um the treaty, the treaty area, uh era era where you're writing words to confuse. To trick a little bit. So the writing and email world is, and I will, this will always come up numerous times when we are discussing many, not all. And it's not just indigenous people, it's non-indigenous people. It's just, it's just the way we were, we learn, we're more visual and oral and. In person. Um I like Anna's, um I like Anna's suggestion and also um I have ADHD. And I, when I'm trying to teach other ADHDers, I have a a time limit. I have to get in and I myself practice this. Um I have to get in as much information in a short amount of time because otherwise I'm losing my target audience. You know, so being able to come in and getting all the words that I have to get out in a timely manner. Um in a lot of different systems that I operate in, we do have um time limit increment because we are so busy in business. And we do have to keep on topic on things in order to, so that just could be a suggestion too. Um is kind of learning our, um learning how to do our deliverance in a timely manner, especially when we deal with people who have attention issue problems.
I like the time limits. I try to, I try to do that, but maybe I need to like put some time numbers behind agenda items and just keep moving us along.
Yeah, and I li- and this is what I really like about you, Kim. You're very um considerate of other people, not. And you know, their feelings. You are very considerate and you don't wanna be disrespectful and I really appreciate about that and that about you. And then so maybe this is something that you and I can work on too, cause I'm good with fast and efficient. And you are good with, and it's not that I'm not good with being respectful to other people's time, but maybe um we can come in and just kind of discuss that. And how we can better um be be more efficient and respectful together with other people's time, like keeping our focus on track. Because we don't like to go over on minutes and I'm zipping.
I like it. Perfect. Thank you. Are there any other suggestions that aren't listed here for the meeting efficiency? It's a work in progress again. I'm gonna keep, we're gonna keep working on it. Alright, thank you.
I think it's really good and I think also um it's helpful to have, you know, like with number seven, the clear motions, it's really helpful when. There's something that has specific language. I appreciate Carsten and, you know, whoever is working with you on those motions when it's a a specific recommendation. Um or, you know, maybe that's something that some of us need to do in the committees um as well, is to come up with that wording then. So that it's ready to go for the meeting, um and easier to tweak when we have changes to come up with. I think sometimes that ends up being a stumbling block. Is how do I word this on the fly?
Yes, that's a really good point.
Alright, uh anything else on the meeting efficiencies? Work in progress, but I think it's good to to have this discussion. The last thing I just wanted to talk with you all about is that I did get um a a community re- uh request. It's called Adopt a Winger Program. This is not actionable. This is not actionable on the student or with our school board, but she does want to have school district buy-in. So I wanted to share this with all of you. It's called an Adopt a Winger Program. And it was inspired by a program that began in the Stuartville School District. It's basically a buddy program. It's like a parent or a community member gets paired up with a staff member, anybody on our staff. And they send, no, the, the community member would send a note or an email, hey, you're doing a great job. A piece that's really been missing the last couple of years in our school district is that we used to have a parent advisory committee that would meet, our PACs. And a big piece of what PACs did was teacher appreciation events. And that really has gone by the wayside. And our community wants to recognize and support our teachers, our staff, to make sure that they know that they are appreciated. And so it's completely voluntary. Teachers don't have, or anybody on our staff, it's open to everybody. But it's voluntary. So if they want to put their hat in the ring, they certainly can. And then this person, our, our community person would pair them with a, a community member. And then the expectation is to send emails, a card of encouragement. Maybe the teacher needs some cutting of supplies. Or maybe a teacher needs more glue. It doesn't mean that the parent or this community member has to provide the glue, but maybe they start a glue drive, you know, and get 10 friends to donate one bottle of glue. It's those kinds of little things, just the little things that our, our staff are missing right now. And we're a community that shows we care about our, our, our staff. They've gone above and beyond and done a lot of extra things. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. I can send you out her whole proposal. It's four pages. I think I'll just email it to you now. Again, I don't think it's actionable, but she does want us to know about it and kind of give her a thumbs up if this is something that she can take and roll with. So I, I do love that idea too, Nikki. I just think that there's, there's so much good that our community wants to do and to be able to have somebody who is willing to pair up staff with community members for a little encouragement, an email here and there, just to be able to say thank you. So anyway, I just wanted to tell you that.
Could, um, Carsten or Pam or somebody, do you know why the PACs no longer operate? I don't know the history of that. I was involved in one when my kids were in Cobble Kids. And then it was off my radar, out of my ability to, to work with. And so then I just lost track of how they, what happened.
With, you know, significant involvement like that, you know, kind of ebbs and flows. And I know several years ago, we had several active elementary PACs. Well, two of them, one for Sunnyside and one for Burnside. The middle school and high school haven't had really active parent committees. But, you know, then there'd be other groups that would really help with prom or, you know, with, you know, parties after graduation or whatever the, the issue might be. Now, a lot, a lot of those folks, you know, have gone through the system, you know, or they've, you know, taken other interests. And so I know they're really having some challenging times, you know, encouraging people to come to those parent committees. And so that's kind of where we are. And that's why, you know, we just haven't had a good attendance. You know, I've talked to other superintendents too, and, you know, we're not alone. People are busy, there's a lot going on. And, you know, it's a time commitment, that's for sure.
Yeah, we just stopped getting people coming. I mean, nobody, nobody would come. I, I'd go to the Twin Bluff one and I'd be the only one there. So yeah, it's tough. Ireland?
No, the problem with the PACs was their failure to file IRS documents and having people keep up with them. They got in trouble for not, I believe it was annual registration and, and reporting of the finances going through there. And it's, it's not only there, but some of our other athletic organizations got into the same type of problem. They corrected it, they had the resources. But for the small resources that are there, the government reporting items can be an issue. And that's when they, I, I believe two of the PACs fell apart at that point because they didn't have the people to file that federal paperwork.
Yeah, I think that was an issue as well. And of course, when you're filing paperwork like that, you know, it takes even a, a stronger time commitment from someone on the committee. And as you're kind of shifting in and out, you know, or as your kids go from one school to another, you know, there are just some natural changes that make it more challenging to, to, to be sustainable. I really miss them because those parent committees with the elementary schools were fantastic. I met some great people that way and we were able to really communicate with people about some different school issues.
Well, and maybe this is a, this is a conversation for another time. But maybe with the world of Zoom meetings now, you know, a lot of issues too, where parents were working during the day, some of the meetings were happening during the day. Impossible to get there if you're a working parent. Sometimes, you know, they'd be held in the night. And if you're a working parent, you might have the evening shift or you've worked all day and you're exhausted and you don't want to go back out. So, you know, it maybe in the world of Zoom, maybe people would be more interested in attending this kind of a meeting. So maybe that's a platform that we can think about moving forward. But anyway, I just wanted to tell you that there are community members out there that want to recognize our staff. And, you know, hopefully if we get the thumbs up from you, if you give us the green light, she'd love to be able to, to just, it's all voluntary. And there's, it's really not monetary. It's just a, a way to express appreciation. So. Awesome. Well, with that, I will, it's 8:19. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
Anna second.
Okay. Moved by Jim, seconded by Anna. Jim?
Aye.
Nikki Buck?
Aye.
Ireland Derrick?
Aye.
Anna Ostendorf?
Aye.
Holly Tower?
Aye.
Jennifer Tiff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. We are adjourned at 8:19. And I'll just say thank you for your flexibility in meeting tonight too. I know that was not on our original schedule, but thank you for your flexibility. I very much appreciate it and I think we had a great discussion tonight.
And that's, that's what came out of our last meeting on Tuesday to say, hey, let's shoot it out for Monday to see who's gonna be around.
Yes, you did.
So have a good night, everybody.
In a note to me.
What's that?
I would have loved a little email update on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.